So the city, or switch to active speaker, just press this button. One more time, come here and then that's it.
God, your video is not active.
I just wait. There we go, guys. Move back.
Thank you.
Move back. And we are recording. Anytime you're ready for showtime, God.
All right, so I did want to say something. For, Judge, this for council, I sent out things on Google Docs, I forgot to tell you, it's under the tab of March the third. Sorry about that.
Let's call this meeting in order. This meeting has been properly advertised and posted in accordance with Public Law seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, has been advertised in the Manxey Press and posted in City Hall and municipal website. If we could please rise to the flag salute. God has a flag on the video there. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Amen. God, can I roll call, please?
Yes, uh, Mr. Delge.
Here.
Mr. Olson.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Owen.
Here.
Ms. Sparks. Ms. Sparks.
You're muted, Julie.
Here.
Gotcha.
Mayor Pedosia.
Present. Um. I make a motion to open a meeting to the public. Second. Call in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is open to the public. Mr. Poe.
Thank you. Um. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. I guess as far as agenda items, at least at the moment, I'm thinking two things. One, uh, for the codification ordinance, I have a renewed request to, uh, divide the question because you have some things that don't require Prime Lands Commission approval. You have other things that do require Prime Lands Commission approval because they amend land use. No matter how non-controversial they are, that is going to take some time. And I would also suggest pulling the forestry piece out. Cause that uh, just winds up not being wise, I think, for the taxpayers of the community. The other thing I see is Resolution forty-two, amend consultant contract. What is that? Is that a change of responsibilities? Is that a change of amount? Both? Something else?
I'm sorry, Creed, Mr. Perg, what was that question?
On Resolution forty-two, it says amend consultant contract. So the question is, is that a change of responsibilities, a change of amount? Something else?
You want to answer that question, please? Mr. Lafferty, you want to answer that question, please?
Oh, sure. Uh, the consultant has requested a change in the, in her contract relative to the duration and the story.
To make it longer and broader or shorter and narrower?
Make it include certain, uh, certain, um, certain functions such as applying for a lead grant, um, and to extend it because of the COVID delay.
Okay. Um. Well, you may want, uh, the only thing I'm gonna say at the moment on Resolution forty-three is that you may want to look at those guidelines that did say that one of the agencies involved would be the lead. It would seem to make more sense for that to be the county. And then finally, for the animal ordinance on new business. I didn't know what that would be.
I'm gonna table that because I put a call in, I didn't get a call back, and I would prefer to have our, uh, animal control officer on the uh, screen with us to discuss that issue. So we are unprepared because we do not have any correspondence from them. And I do not want to make the presentation on her behalf.
Okay. And on public works, are the doors coming on the garage?
Oh, no. Never followed that issue.
Never followed that issue?
No.
Okay.
Anything else, Creed?
That's it, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Is there anyone else in the public?
I would like to talk.
Yeah.
I'm good, how are you?
Very good.
So I'm sorry, I don't have an agenda, I'm new to joining this via Zoom, um, I just happened to reach out and have a question and went on the website and saw that you guys had a meeting. Um, I'm just going to see if we're doing road cleanup again. I know we didn't do it in the fall because of COVID, um, and I didn't know if that was being pushed to the spring, um, because there are a lot of organizations that kind of use that money for fundraising.
I do believe that there was a conversation about that, uh, late last year, sometime on or about in the beginning of October, and I know that it was, uh, postponed. I don't really know if we're doing it in the spring, nothing's been mentioned about that at this time. I don't think it's really a bad idea, I think we should be continuing it again. Uh, clean community, people who's on that committee, I would prefer to, uh, defer my comment. Who's on clean community? Anyone? Mr. Olson, are you on the Clean Communities Committee?
I think he's getting the list.
Okay. Mrs. Owen, I think you're on that as well, or no?
Uh, I'm pulling up a list.
Yeah. I spoke to him already. He believed I did, I like that.
And Mayor, while the list is being pulled up, I need to add Resolution forty-four of twenty twenty-one, which is a complement to the ordinance, one of twenty twenty-one, which is a referral to the planning board for review pursuant to section twenty-six of the MLEL, NJSA forty pass five three dash twenty-six.
Good, thank you, Mayor.
I should say I'm asking you to add, I can't add anything.
Well, I mean, you're the one to prepare the, uh, resolution, correct, sir?
I prepare the ordinance in conjunction with general categories.
Very good. Well, you prepared the resolution, as you say, in Resolution forty-four.
I, I do have the resolution, but I will, I will turn that in.
Does anybody have an answer for, uh, Mrs. McDonald so we don't keep her, uh, waiting much longer?
I don't have a list of the committees and who's on them.
Uh, I thought you've handled that out like twice so far.
Yeah, nobody asked if I can find it, so.
Could I, could I say?
Mrs. Owen, Mrs. Owen, you, um, you said something last year, and then I think that we, uh, did discuss about what we were going to do with the money that we, uh, normally receive, that it can be used for purchasing, uh, things around the uh, for the town as it relates to a clean community item. So you wanna pick up on that conversation?
Oh, I, I have no problem doing a, um, a clean community cleanup, that's not a problem. I do think that we need to wait a little bit longer, to find out who's getting shots, that kind of thing, to give them time to do that, and to find out where we're, where we're trending on, um, COVID too, because I, I know Mesa Landing had a cleanup, and then at the end of that cleanup, somebody tested positive, and then that was an issue.
Am I, am I just about, I don't know if I'm still allowed to just talk.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, so I, again, I, I just am trying to find out if you're having it or not. I know that Weemuth had one, um. Again, I completely understand that your concerns about that, but I, I just think that if guidelines are set and it's six feet apart or whatever, it's not like you have to clean the road in, in like a bundle of people, so. Um, I just want to put it out there, express my opinion. If you can and you might figure out a way to do it, I'm not saying to do it now, it's still cold, things like that, but if we could plan one for April or May, and then you're right, then the vaccines are out and we're a little more aware of what our numbers are, so that's all. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald.
Uh, is there anyone else in the public?
I don't see anyone there.
Okay. Before I, okay, I make a motion to close the, uh, meeting to the public. Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor. Aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, a couple of house item, uh, house cleaning items, I just want to get out, um, before we get too deep into the meeting here. I got a call from someone from the state forest fire service today, and they're gonna be doing some, uh, controlled burns on First Avenue, crossover, uh, Cape May Avenue going down the dirt portion. And they're gonna be at least fifteen hundred feet or so off of the, uh, roadway there. And the controlled burn is actually going to be part of that, it's on a piece of municipal property. Is council okay that the, uh, Forest Fire Service would do the controlled burn there because it is for the purposes of trying to, uh, control wildfires? Is, is council okay with that?
Who, um, Mr. Mayor, who does the controlled burns normally there?
The New Jersey State Forest Fire Service is the one who conducts that. Uh, they did a spot out on Route fifty a little while ago in County Park. They target particular areas where they feel that there could be a potential, uh, problem. So this one here, they're gonna be doing some state land over there on First Avenue. Uh, it's way down. There's a portion of, uh, uh, city property that's in there as well. I, don't hold me, but I think it's a twenty-five acre piece, but nonetheless, they feel that it's a, uh, a threat. So they wanna do the controlled burn in there. Is council okay with that? Because, you know, if not.
Yes.
Counsel's okay? Alright, so I will send a, uh, email over to, uh, Mr. Blile, who had called me today earlier and, uh, wanted to know. Thank you. Uh. One other thing that I wanted to say is that, uh, I'd like to start this meeting off on a little bit of some good news, but we, I've been talking with the county, and we are going to have donated to us a pickup truck. Mr. Cornew took a ride over there, he did look at it, he said it runs fine, it's in very good shape, it's got high mileage. And once they get over two hundred thousand miles, the county just basically wants to get rid of them, they practically give them away. Uh, beans that it's, uh, municipality to a county or vice versa, beans is government to government. Uh. I believe that they're gonna give it to us for a nominal fee. A very nominal fee, such as a dollar, for the transfer of the title. So I don't think we're going along with that. So if you see our public works, uh, people riding around in a pickup truck, it's because the county was so gracious to, uh, donate it to us. It may be possible for two hundred dollars, but I was told, uh, it's not gonna be that much. So. There you have it. Other than that, moving down to the, uh, engineer's report. It's, uh, Michael on our, um.
Yes, Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, accountant.
I'll be brief this evening, um. We have the closeout documents for city hall improvement, they've been sent over to the city. So as soon as we get the, um, documents executed, um, by the city and sent back to our office, we'll send those over to the improvement authority and complete the closeout of the project. Um, Fifth Avenue, we're just completing the revisions per the pine lands, they, um, have received our, our plans and specs and the drainage. Had a couple revisions and some clarifications, so just finishing that up. I should have that turned around to them shortly, um, to proceed with getting that permit for the roadway. And then lastly, our, our office provided, uh, council a, uh, proposal for land surveying and engineering services for the resurfacing of Maple Avenue. Um, so just, you know, awaiting, uh, direction from council on that, um, and then we will, uh, be able to proceed.
So have we actually in fact been notified by the state, Mike, with regards to the Fifth Avenue as far as the, uh, retention pond and if it's, uh, gonna be acceptable for us to use our retention pond over here by the, uh, soccer field? Did we ever get the file?
Right now, I'm tr- I'm trying to do an offset to where we don't have to u- utilize that drainage. Um, so I have some calculations demonstrating that, and, um, you know, that's what we're gonna submit for.
Okay. So have you had any?
And then, uh, one thing, and one thing I, I forgot to mention, um, there was a correspondence and email um, from, I believe, an, an engineering firm that, that was sent to the city. And this was in regards to Walker's Forge, um, it's my understanding that, you know, based upon this email, they're gonna be doing some utility work, or maybe something associated with the gas line, and there's a question regarding, um, you know, the procedure to have documents that are required, um, to be provided to the DEP signed off, uh, of the owner, and since the road, roadway is a city street, they're gonna need a representative from the city to sign off, um, as the owner. And, you know, I, I don't know the particulars, you know, how this is, um, you know, um, the, the procedure to sign such forms in the city. But it was, it was, the question was raised myself, you know, you know, whether we should be signing, but the email was just indicating, you know, the procedures, and we weren't, I was not privy to any sort of documents or, you know, plans or what they're looking, you know, to do or improve within that roadway, so. Once those are provided, I'll be able to give some direction to council, um, in regards to signing off any such documents, um, that this individual is looking for for DEP permitting purposes.
Got it. Okay. Alright. Does anybody have any questions for, uh, for Mike? Okay, Mike, thanks for your, uh, presentation, we'll, uh, be in touch.
Oh, great. Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, give me a copy of the bill list. Uh, moving down the, uh, bill list over here. Does anybody have any questions pertaining to the bill list? I guess one I have is, uh, Planet Technologies for the email software, uh, what is that one there, Judge?
They, that's, they had all our, our email. If anything that has to do with emails, it's recommended for airline keepers.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Do it every year.
Um. I'm looking here, we have Sealman and Sons for gutter repair on the Rizley School.
That was a good one.
We. Mr. Cornew, our public works guy, was getting quotes to get it done. And then he comes into work and sees that the, uh, job is on their way, I mean, nobody notified anybody.
Well, Mr. Pope did talk to me about it, and I said to go ahead and get quotes, I guess in the meantime, the fellow went out and did the work and he has an issue, found the issue or something and took care of it, so that's why, uh, it was a lapse there and didn't make the quote.
Cause normally that's, we go out and get the quotes and all that, and I mean, that's the procedure that we follow since day one.
Yeah, but he indicated that he already talked to this gentleman and that he was already, I guess he did some work prior to that by taking the gutters down. Uh, not for sure, but I mean, that would help him fail, but.
I know Mr. Cornew had indicated he put in a good couple hours trying to get ahold of people, and then he did, they'd get ahold, and then he had to meet with them and whatever, whatever, and next thing you know, he's waiting on somebody to come down to give a quote. And they're doing the garters.
We did have someone come down to bind and they, and they gave a quote for it.
Mm-hmm.
And then he was waiting for some other quotes too. But he called me and I told him what happened and I didn't know what was, you know, since Mr. Pope told me about it and then what Jeff was doing. You know, we didn't.
There's not much communication, but obviously that this, this, I don't know if, there's, there's a lot of things I don't even want to say at this point, but, you know, that's not the procedure of how it's done. It's just not.
I don't have the, uh, I don't have the, that doesn't appear on the bill list that I have, how much is Mr. Sealman's bill?
That's, uh.
Eight hundred dollars is what I'm looking at here.
There was a revised bill list that I put on Google Docs.
Okay.
And it's under the March third, um, heading.
So I, I know that there was a one or two quotes that were in, one was definitely higher than this one here, I'm not complaining about the price, I'm complaining about the procedure which how it was done, I mean, as, as we are aware, we have to know for certainty that somebody's insured, they have to, uh, uh, send in the certificate of insurance as, uh, as required. They also have to prove their insurance, they have to have a contractor's registration. Don't know if we had any that supplied to us. So this is not the way that's supposed to be done, it's already done.
May I say something, Mayor?
Can't go back. Go ahead.
Um, uh, uh, and I apologize, uh, for not having brought this to anyone's attention before, on Saturday I received a call at home from Mrs. Pope, Mrs. Diane Pope, explaining that, uh, that Mr. Sealman had been out and measured and, and done things. Um. And that the Historic Society Building and Grounds Committee had spoken with him and given him the green light to, uh, to make the repairs to the, the gutters. I spoke with Mrs., oh, I, I'm sorry, I advised Mrs. Pope that this, you know, ki- that this goes beyond kind of our procedure and our policy, it's not how we do things, and she runs the risk of the Historic Society being stuck for the, the cost of it because the city didn't first peruse or, 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 you know, we didn't apply our policy and we didn't approve the expenditure. I also thought, you know, uh, full disclosure, I also told her that I didn't think it would go that way, that it was clear the damage was done, I had seen it myself. And that as long as the expense was reasonable, council would probably move to have the city pay for it since we're responsible for the building. But I did, um, speak with her about proper procedure, and, uh, and I advised Mrs. Owen, Mrs. Owen instructed me to have Mrs. Pope call her so that she could reinforce my commentary, and I did not get back to Mrs. Pope. Um, since, between Saturday and now, I have not gotten back to Mrs. Pope to ask her to call Mrs. Owen.
And we also need to get a certification of the availability of funds, which the CFO never issued that. I mean, that, that's a mandatory, we have to do that. You just simply don't spend money without the, uh, certification that the funds are available, and we're still operating right now with a temporary budget. So it was definitely a very, very wrong procedure. I didn't know about it until Jeff called me and said, hey, Joe, I can tell you this, but, uh, I got another quote coming in today and, and the job is halfway completed. So.
I, I, the only other thing I can add is I did see it prior to the work, prior to the, to the, the damaged gutters being taken down, and it was, and it needed to be fixed, I mean, it was an emergency repair. We could have done it better, I think the Historic Society probably could have looped the setting, and, and together we could have gotten it done better. Uh, maybe the good news is that it got done. Alright, it's good to hear you say that the one quote you did see was higher than, than the bill for the work actually being done, that, that is somewhat reassuring, I, I don't know what else to say other than.
No, I'm not, I'm, Mr. Delge, I'm not complaining about the price, I'm just saying, you know, this is gonna go into a, a, an audit finding because the, the, the procedure was done in, in its entirety wrong. And as far as emergency, I mean, Mr. Mr. Cornew was gonna rip the, uh, gutters off, where I mean, as soon as you take them off, nothing was gonna happen to the building, a couple of weeks without gutters and, and by the way, did we even, uh, did we get notified from the insurance company? Because that's a, that's a claim that we can, uh, collect on. I, I, it's like, everything is just all bypassed and let's just get it done, but tomorrow's never gonna come. That's just not gonna be good business.
I agree to the extent that the horse, it's, it's, it kind of struck me that the horse was out of the barn before the city got, got involved in it as it relates to the Historic Society, but I don't think anyone was ill-intended, I think it was trying to, trying to get it done, it didn't look like that big a deal to.
I'm not saying it ill-intent, I'm saying the procedure was correct. It's, it's, it's not the way that we're supposed to do things, you know? And it's gonna come up and date up in, in an audit finding.
I agree.
Just so you know.
I agree. I agree, I'm sorry I didn't, I didn't, uh, give you a heads up, I, uh, it was Saturday, I'm sorry.
If beans that we're discussing this, Mr. Moore, can you tell me, what is the, uh, threshold that, uh, when you cross that threshold to have the funds certified to be available? What's, what's the monetary amount?
I believe it's a thousand, well, anything over five hundred dollars, it should be, it goes to council, which is what our current policy is. Uh, and for me to certify the funds at that time, but the state law says that, um, you know, anything, we, we, we need more than one quote over six thousand dollars, anything under six thousand dollars, you, you would formally don't even have to get another quote, although it is wise when something like this to get more than one quote. So.
And, and we also have to have the contractor's regis- registration certificate, and he also has to have the city as additionally insured. I've done work for governmental agencies and I can't start anything unless I, unless I certify on my certificate.
I saw the moniker, there's a contractor's license, but I also need to issue, uh, you know, it would be a time form, but.
His price is very reasonable, I'm not saying I'm worried about the price and I'm sure the work was done right, it's just, you know, we have a problem with procedure not being followed by.
Well, why don't we just maybe, I think you made your point.
Yep, I did. Does anybody have anything else pertaining to the bill list? I just, I'll ask one last question, Judge, for the fire company, they have, uh, an amount of two thousand, is this just their annual, not annual, is this their
Yeah.
The payment that we give them, uh?
Well, we give them off, we, we budget ten thousand each year, but the cheap one's in and I need some more cash, so I, I give it out in increments, I give them a thousand already and now the two thousand, you show it to the, uh, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, there's permission.
I'll make the necessary motion to approve the bill list in the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Okay, sir? So there's no further discussion, can we have, uh, roll call, please?
Mr. Delge? Yes. Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Pedosia?
Yes. Moving down the line here, um. I do not, or excuse me, I did not receive a copy of the minutes until I saw late this afternoon. It's like I'm getting flooded with email after email after email, and I really need to have hard copies to be able to fully digest it. Um, and as you know, I have a problem with my iPad. And it's password locked, can't get into it.
They, they were sent out by email.
Yep.
Um, I think like the eleventh, for the regular meeting. I sent mine out on the special meeting this weekend, but if you wanna take your time to look at it, then just, just table this until.
I'd, I'd prefer that we just table this here at this time, I'm, I, uh, motion to table the, uh, minutes, please, is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, we have a letter of correspondence which is gonna dovetail right into a landfill presentation, I did in fact happen to have a conversation with a, uh, Mr. Jeff Birch. Uh, I do know that what they're looking to do is, um, put a solar development on our landfill. It was, it's basically an inquiry, um. I had indicated that we have our landfill currently uh, under contract with LRS, and, uh, I'm not sure if they contacted LRS, I certainly gave the, uh, number for them to call Mr. Dyke, excuse me, Mr. Dyke. And, um, we have Mr. Dyke that's gonna give his presentation tonight on, uh, an email that he has sent to the city, so. Mr. Dyke, are you in the, uh, audience?
Yes. I'm here.
Okay, um. Jeff, did you by chance happen to talk with, um, um, the other Jeff, Jeff Birch?
Yeah, Jeff and Jeff, yeah. Uh, yes, he called me today, I got back to him and we spoke for, uh, a few minutes.
Mm-hmm.
About the, about the, his interest in the project, so. I'd given him some details and. I'd given him some details and, uh, as I mentioned to council, I forget which, which meeting it was, but I do have, uh, our energy consultants, uh, looking at the, some of the issues related to solar development on the landfill, uh, property. They are, they have been very busy. I spoke to them, uh, yesterday. They're going to have that to me by the end of the week, which I will pass on to Mayor and Council upon receipt. Jeff's main question.